We'll begin with the transmitting of Treasury Warrants 52, 52A, 53, 53A, 53B, 54, 54A, 1, 2, 2A, 3, and 3A. Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
May I second it? All in favor? It's unanimous. We'll move to our appointments, and our first appointment scheduled for 7:00 is with Mark Fell of Coke Membrane Systems, Inc., and it's regarding a public hearing relative to the request for a flammable license for property located at 850 Main Street. Mr. Fell? Sir, if you'd like to have a seat at the table, be our guest.
Have a seat at the table. Thank you very much. My name is Paul Feltry. I'm the Environmental Health and Safety Manager for KMS, and I want -- and this is Mark Fell.
Good evening, Mark Fell, also from KMS.
Good evening. And I want to, first of all, thank you, Selectmen, for giving us the opportunity to meet with you this evening, Manager. The purpose for our visit here is to -- is a petition for combustible storage permit increase from 9,999 gallons to 29,999 gallons. The purpose of this request is for food-grade glycerin is the material that we will be storing, a material that's used very commonly in lotions, suntan lotions, body lotions. We use it in our process as a umectant, or it keeps the membranes and filter medium that we manufacture moist so that they stay preserved for a longer period of time. Again, the purpose is for expansion of a product line, which requires us to maintain more material, and also to maintain price competitiveness. That's the summary. Thank you for that. As this is a public hearing, we will open it up to the audience first. I'd like to get any recommendations from town administration, go to the board, and then the audience if anyone is interested in speaking. Mr. Hall?
Yes, I have a recommendation from Al Spalding, the Building Inspector. He notes, I have reviewed the above-mentioned application, and they have no outstanding zoning or building code issues. There's also correspondence from the Fire Department in an effort to sustain competitiveness and company growth. Coke Membrane of 850 Main Street Wilmington is in the planning stages of expanding its product line. To achieve this goal, it is necessary that the current flammable and combustible material storage license capacity be increased. This increase is directly related to the need for storing higher amounts of Class 111B combustible liquids, which will be used in the newly proposed Mega Pure TM Expansion Line product production. Representatives from Wilmington Fire Department and Coke Membrane officials have met on two occasions at the Main Street facility to review the newly planned process and storage requirements. An escorted walk-through was conducted through both facilities, areas in Buildings B and D designated where production and storage relating to the new lines will take place. Wilmington Fire Department has reviewed the documents outlining the Mega Pure TM Expansion Line code approach, and are confident that all Mass state building codes, 780 CMR and Mass Board of Fire Prevention 527 CMR, as well as MFPA 30 flammable and combustible liquids codes, will be strictly adhered to regarding planning, development, storage, and implementation of the new product line. Coke Membrane Systems has a strong record of code compliance with the Wilmington Fire Department and has exhibited high standards regarding workplace safety and the handling of all types of chemicals, including flammable and combustible materials. The Wilmington Fire Department is recommending approval in regards to the submitted application for the license to increase storage of flammable and combustibles to the amount requested in the application package respectfully submitted by Gary Donovan, Deputy Fire Chief.
Questions or comments from the board?
No, no. No questions.
I know there are members of the Fire Department here. I see Lieutenant Hurley. Any questions or comments from the audience, either for the board or for the Fire Department? Seeing and hearing none. Entertain a motion from the board?
I make a motion based on the Fire Department's recommendations that we accept approved license for the flammable.
Second it.
May I second it? Anything further? All in favor? It's unanimous? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right here?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's see. Yep. Move to our next scheduled appointment with Joseph Zapiga, Project Manager of Manafort Brothers, Inc., regarding a public hearing and a request to renew earth removal permit for Wilmington High School, 161 Church Street. Good evening.
Good evening. I am Earl Jackson, Project Engineer with Manafort Brothers Incorporated. I'm sitting in on behalf of Joseph Zapiga, who was unable to attend tonight due to a previous commitment. I am here tonight to renew the earth removal permit that we have from last year for the Wilmington High School project, and I would like to extend it for one more year to continue our operation on-site.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Are there recommendations?
Yes, we have recommendations from Shelley Newhouse, Health Director. I recommend approval of the earth removal permit for Manafort Brothers, Inc., 161 Church Street. Also, Al Spalding, the Building Inspector, notes, I have reviewed the application for an earth removal permit for the above property and have no outstanding zoning issues. Michael Woods, the Public Works Director, we have reviewed the earth removal application for the new high school project and have no comments or concerns as related to the Department of Public Works, which include Water and Engineering divisions. Any questions or comments from the audience? I just wanted to recognize Mike Marsala from Gilbane, who's the town's construction manager on the project. Do we have a motion?
Based on the recommendations, I'll make a motion that we grant the permit.
I'll second it.
May I second it? Anything further? All in favor? It's unanimous?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Next regularly scheduled appointment is with Scott Garant, Esquire, on behalf of LLM, excuse me, LLM, Inc., doing business as Tremazo Restaurante, regarding a public hearing relative to the request for an all-alcohol license for property located at Two Lowell Street. And I just note for the record that Mr. Garant, in his representation of his client, is also appearing before the board with two other requests this evening. One is to obtain a common victuals license for the property at the same location, and the same for an entertainment license also located at Two Lowell Street. So, Counselor, have a seat.
Thank you, Chairman. Before you ask, I'd like to bring my board to you.
Thank you. And, Mr. Garant, feel free to discuss any one or all of the applications at the same time, whatever's convenient for you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. As you stated, the applicant is LLM, Inc., seeking to open a new restaurant at Two Lowell Street. There are three principals of LLM, Inc., Richard Lowe, Mauro Lucchese, and James Martin. Combined, these gentlemen have more than five decades of experience in the food service business. I would extend Mr. Lucchese's regrets he couldn't be here this evening as he is ill. Mr. Lowe and Mr. Martin are here this evening. Their vision for this location is to operate a restaurant offering an Italian fusion menu. I'll have to defer to Mr. Martin if the members of the board want a specific detailed definition of Italian fusion. However, as I understand it, the menu will include gourmet pizza, everything from gourmet pizza to paella. These gentlemen have been working hard to get the location in shape to open and look forward to being part of the community. As you stated, Mr. Chairman, the applications before you this evening are for approval of an all-alcohol license, common victuals license, and an entertainment license for the purpose of providing small local bands and, at times, comedians. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Hall, what do we have for recommendations?
From the Police Department, Chief Begonis indicates upon completing a review of the Wilmington Police Department recommends approval of the request presented by LLM, Inc., DBA Tremazo Restaurante for both an alcohol restaurant license and entertainment license at Two Lowell Street Wilmington. The Building Inspector, Al Spalding, indicates the property is located in a general business zone. I have reviewed the above-mentioned application and find no outstanding zoning issues. Shelley Newhouse, the Health Director, indicates I have reviewed, I recommend approval of the application for the common victuals license and alcohol license for Tremazo Restaurante, Two Lowell Street, subject to meeting all requirements of the Board of Health.
Questions or comments from the board?
I don't know. Would it be appropriate to ask a question directly to the principals or to the owners, since they're in the room?
Absolutely.
Pick their brain a little bit. Gentlemen, congratulations, and thank you. It looks like all the documentation, at least from my eyesight, is going swimmingly. You've got recommendations of approval by all the appropriate boards, so I'll be voting in the affirmative. I just wondered, I think there's a fair amount of anticipation for your arrival. The absence of your predecessor in that site, I think, created a gap in our community for that kind of entertainment and that kind of fare, so I can speak for myself personally and for those that I associate with that were excited to have you coming on board and into that spot and to sort of fill that void. I don't know if you wanted to speak to that at all, or is there anything more about the entertainment component? That's something that I kind of have a question about, is I guess I knew what was happening there before, but I heard Mr. Garant talk about comedians, and I'm trying to think about the layout. So, what's your vision for that, if I may ask?
The vision actually is to be very similar to what they had before. I'm sorry. That's what this is here for, right? It's to be similar to what they had before.
Okay.
When we say comedians, we don't plan on having comedians that you don't have on a regular schedule on a basis. We plan on having bands, and we're looking for the crowd, the 35 to older crowd, which is similar to, I think, what they had before. You probably know better than I. But, you know, the entertainment is there. I know that it's, the people in the town of Wilmington have stopped by, spoken to us quite often, and they really, really look forward to the music as well as James's great food. We're happy to be a part of the, we look forward to be a part of the, you know, the town of Wilmington and look forward to many years here, so.
The entertainment question usually comes before the food question.
We're making an assumption.
You have entertainment, how about the food?
I guess we're making an assumption that your food's going to be superior.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. I don't have any more questions. I just wanted to give you an opportunity to sort of speak about it.
Well, I appreciate taking my pleasure.
Thank you. We look forward to having you on board.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Can you speak a little more on the menu?
Yes. Well, like Scott had said, it's going to have everything from pizzas and pastas to veal chops, filets, steaks, specials every night. I'm Portuguese. I've been cooking Italian food since I was 14, so there'll be some Portuguese-influenced items on the menu as well. But, you know, primarily Italian with a twist. You know, I think it's going to be a little different quality than you had there before. It better be. With our years of experience and, you know, this is my first chance in my own restaurant, per se. I was partners in a restaurant coming into this, and, you know, talking to everyone in Wilmington, and the location is unbelievable. It really is. And I think that, like you said, we're going to provide that gap that's kind of there right now for food in town.
Beautiful. Very good.
We wish you well.
Thank you.
Super. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Any questions or comments from the audience? And just for the record, I'd note that of the three requests that are before us this evening, the first request for an all-alcohol license is in fact a public hearing. Does not appear that anybody wants to offer any comment or has any questions, but in terms of the other requests, I think it's perfectly appropriate for us to take those in order without any separate comment, period. So, I'd ask for a motion and to separate the three, three different motions, three requests.
Do you want a separate motion to be able to vote on the second two?
Yeah, we'll take each one in order.
All right, well, I would move that we vote in that fashion.
Okay. Do we have a motion on the all-alcohol license?
Okay, I'm sorry. I will move that we approve the all-alcohol license for LLM Incorporated doing business as Tremazo Restaurant.
May I second it? Anything further? All in favor? It's unanimous? On the victuals license?
I'll move.
Second.
May I second it? Anything further? All in favor? It's unanimous? And on the entertainment license?
I'll move to approve the entertainment license for Tremazo Restaurant.
May I second it? All in favor? It's unanimous?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Counselor. Good luck, gentlemen. Thank you for being here. Have a good night.
Good luck.
Our next scheduled appointment is on for 7:40, so in the interest of anybody who might plan to appear, let's move on to Communications, and then we'll return to that agenda item either upon a completion of the other agenda items or at 7:40. First, under Communications, we have a letter that came up at the last Selectments meeting. This is from Beth Bresnahan from the State Lottery Commission with respect to offering a keynote license for the proprietors at Route 38 Smoke Shop. The notice does indicate that the town has 21 days from receipt of the letter to object to this offering. In light of the timing at the last meeting, we did look to extend, the police chief made a request to extend this review period, and it was granted through the end of July. The chief has submitted a recommendation that reads as follows. After review of the documentation regarding the keynote-to-go application, the Wilmington Police Department performed a site visit. During the visit, it was discovered the operators of Route 38 Smoke Shop are offering for sale items that we believe are prohibited by both state and federal law. We have notified the operators of this establishment and the owner of the building at this location to cease the sale of these items and remove them from the facility immediately. It is therefore our recommendation to deny the proposed keynote-to-go operation at this location. So, it's the pleasure of the board whether you wish to take a vote on this now or under Board to Consider, but essentially, the recommendation is to object. If I may, Chief, has anything changed since the recommendation you provided in terms of what your bottom-line recommendation is?
No. We have not re-inspected. Previously, there had been an issue with some similar type of incidents. It's a change in the background.
Okay. Why don't we take that up under a Board to Consider item when we get to it? Next, under Correspondence, is a memorandum from me to the board with respect to Tennessee Gas, the meeting that's scheduled this evening. In this memo, I basically provide a series of attachments, including some, a presentation that was made in the Pepperell. Also, offer a series of issues that I suggest the board consider during the course of the presentation this evening. There's a letter to the State Mass Department of Transportation. This is a follow-up from our last meeting with respect to the proposed concept on Route 38. The town of Wilmington respectfully requests that the Wilmington Route 38 Traffic and Safety Improvements Project be approved by the PRC and be considered for eligibility for future federal TIP construction funding through the Boston Metropolitan Planning Organization. The traffic and safety improvements requested in Wilmington along Route 38 between the intersections with Route 62 and the Lubrin City Line is a state-owned and maintained section of the highway. The highway section has been experiencing severe daily traffic congestion and is in need for safety improvements, including bicycle and pedestrian accommodations. The town supports improved traffic operation and safety improvements and is prepared to partner with MassDOT to advocate for the necessary TIP funding. To this date, the following steps have been taken by the town. First, we have met with you and the MassDOT key staff and expressed our desire that traffic operations and safety of this roadway be improved. Since this roadway is a state-owned and maintained highway, you have encouraged us to apply TIP funding. Second, we have committed town resources and have hired a MassDOT pre-qualified engineering consulting firm with the appropriate prequalification approvals to perform preliminary traffic studies at key intersections and to propose conceptual designs along 38 Quarter. And third, conceptual designs were presented at the public meeting of the Board of Selectmen held at the Wilmington Town Hall on June 23, 2014. The town solicited feedback from town officials and the general public, and the meeting resulted in expressed public support for this project. The Board of Selectmen has voted to support the project and to commit town resources to further advance the design efforts if approved by MassDOT. Once the project is approved by the PRC and programmed for TIP funding, the town will provide the financing necessary to move the design of this project forward. We understand that PRC only meets on a quarterly basis. Please let us know the outcome. We also have a request. Okay, this is, we also have correspondence. This, again, came out of a meeting, a couple of meetings ago, with respect to the adoption of Master in the Law, Chapter 40, Section 4. This is with respect to the opting in, so to speak, to the public safety provisions of the general law, and it basically provides the documentation that memo requires a Mass Office of Emergency Management in order to allow the town to be part of a regional resource-sharing deployment for emergency situations. Go on to Board to Consider. Yes, please. Under Board to Consider, I would suggest the first item to consider would be any action with respect to the keynote granting of a, or objecting to the keynote offering for Route 38 Smoke Shop. Let's entertain a motion at this time relative to the Route 28, I'm sorry, Route 38 Smoke Shop. Earlier, we heard the chief's recommendation. Do we have a motion?
Based on that recommendation, Mr. Chairman, I vote that we deny the permit or whatever we're asked for at this point.
Yeah, I second it loudly.
Okay, may I second it? Anything further? All in favor? It's unanimous? The next item under Board to Consider is a request by the police chief for use of the Rotary Park for the purpose of conducting a national night-out celebration on Tuesday, August 5, 2014. He notes, with respect to use of Rotary Park, "The purpose is for conducting a national night-out celebration, introduction of National Night Out. America's Night Out Against Crime was initially established in 1984 in an effort to promote involvement in crime prevention activities, police community partnerships, neighborhood camaraderie, send a message to criminals, letting them know that the neighborhoods are organizing and fighting back. The National Night Out program culminates annually on the first Tuesday of August. National Night Out now involves over 37.8 million people in 16,124 communities from all 50 states, U.S. territories, Canadian cities, and military bases worldwide." He indicates further on that this year's event will be sponsored by the Wilmington Police Department in partnership with the Cummings Foundation 100K for 100 Grant, which the department was awarded in June. Cummings Foundation generosity is a key component to the partnership, and we have developed with the hope of to bring the police department and the Wilmington neighborhoods together in an effort to share crime prevention initiatives and enhance neighborhood involvement in making Wilmington a safer community for all to enjoy. So, there's a request for use of Rotary Park. Chief, the touch-a-truck, is that kind of just a truck show with different kinds of trucks?
Yes. We have all kinds of police equipment, fire equipment there for kids to come climb on and check out and get some information.
Any questions or comments?
Will you have a detail on staff? I'm just kidding. Yeah, I certainly have no objection. In fact, I look, good. Looks like a lot of fun. It'll be great, and I would like to move that we approve the use of Rotary Park on August 5 for their annual Night Out Against Crime campaign.
May I second it? Anything further before we take the vote? Chief, is there anything you want to add that wasn't contained in the memorandum?
Yeah, maybe you want to give the company the dump tank, that they worry about.
N, W, H, U, S, E.
Actually, since he's not here, I think Mr. McCray would be glad to volunteer.
Judy will do the second hour.
May I second it? All in favor?
Yes.
It's unanimous? Thank you, Chief.
Let us know what we can do.
We have a request for the board to consider granting a utility easement. This is essentially to connect a water main that dead-ends currently on Amherst Road. Mike Woods, the Public Works Director, has been in discussions with the developer of some homes off of Carter Lane, and through his efforts was able to get the developer to agree to connect the Amherst line over to Carter Lane, which will enhance water flow in that area. And this utility easement, if authorized, the board would allow that to happen. And I see that Mr. Woods is present. Anything that you want to add, or is that to sum it up?
I think that's enough. We have any direct questions before we tap in?
Great. Questions or comments from the board?
Out of curiosity, if I may, out of curiosity, in the absence of this, I have no reason to be, but how would they have gotten water without it?
They actually have access to water. This was a little aidment to allow us to eliminate a dead-end mine on Amherst Road and call it out on Long Road. It had long winds out of this water, so he allowed it as a business of the time right on the slate, the president was going to make that check, and it moved the quality of water.
Great, thank you. And looking at the audience, I don't see anybody who's trying to get my attention. Nobody's here for this, right? Okay, entertain a motion from the board?
I'll move to grant the easement, the utility easement as stated.
May I second it? All in favor? It's unanimous? Thank you, Mr. Woods. And at that, I think we'll return to schedule the general items. Excuse me, our 7:40 appointment is with Alan Four, Director of Public Affairs, Kinder Morgan, and it's regarding a proposed natural gas pipeline project. Mr. Four, am I, is Mr. Four present? Am I saying your name correctly, first of all?
Yes.
All right, great. Feel free to have a seat here at the front table. Feel free to have a seat here at the front table. Over here? Yes, shortly, yep. We'll give these gentlemen a couple moments to set up, and we'll get to it.
Do you want the lights on?
Thank you. Oh, sorry. Thank you. of the town of Wilmington, officials of the town, Police Chief Begonis, Public Works Superintendent Mike Woods, Mr. Holt from our Town Engineering Department, and I think I just saw Carol Hamilton, our Planning Director. So they are with us this evening in attendance for this matter. of the town of Wilmington, officials of the town, Police Chief Begonis, Public Works Superintendent Mike Woods, Mr. Holt from our Town Engineering Department, and I think I just saw Carol Hamilton, our Planning Director. So they are with us this evening in attendance for this matter. of the town of Wilmington, officials of the town, Police Chief Begonis, Public Works Superintendent Mike Woods, Mr. Holt from our Town Engineering Department, and I think I just saw Carol Hamilton, our Planning Director. So they are with us this evening in attendance for this matter. And while the, while the presentation is being set up, I just, again, recognize members of the town of Wilmington, officials of the town, Police Chief Begonis, Public Works Superintendent Mike Woods, Mr. Holt from our Town Engineering Department, and I think I just saw Carol Hamilton, our Planning Director. So they are with us this evening in attendance for this matter. And while the, while the presentation is being set up, I just, again, recognize members of the town of Wilmington, officials of the town, Police Chief Begonis, Public Works Superintendent Mike Woods, Mr. Holt from our Town Engineering Department, and I think I just saw Carol Hamilton, our Planning Director. So they are with us this evening in attendance for this matter. And while the, while the presentation is being set up, I just, again, recognize members of the town of Wilmington, officials of the town, Police Chief Begonis, Public Works Superintendent Mike Woods, Mr. Holt from our Town Engineering Department, and I think I just saw Carol Hamilton, our Planning Director. So they are with us this evening in attendance for this matter. And while the, while the presentation is being set up, I just, again, recognize members of the town of Wilmington, officials of the town, Police Chief Begonis, Public Works Superintendent Mike Woods, Mr. Holt from our Town Engineering Department, and I think I just saw Carol Hamilton, our Planning Director. So they are with us this evening in attendance for this matter. And while the, while the presentation is being set up, I just, again, recognize members of the town of Wilmington, officials of the town, Police Chief Begonis, Public Works Superintendent Mike Woods, Mr. Holt from our Town Engineering Department, and I think I just saw Carol Hamilton, our Planning Director. So they are with us this evening in attendance for this matter. And while the, while the presentation is being set up, I just, again, recognize members of the town of Wilmington, officials of the town, Police Chief Begonis, Public Works Superintendent Mike Woods, Mr. Holt from our Town Engineering Department, and I think I just saw Carol Hamilton, our Planning Director. So they are with us this evening in attendance for this matter. And while the, while the presentation is being set up, I just, again, recognize members of the town of Wilmington, officials of the town, Police Chief Begonis, Public Works Superintendent Mike Woods, Mr. Holt from our Town Engineering Department, and I think I just saw Carol Hamilton, our Planning Director. So they are with us this evening in attendance for this matter. And while the, while the presentation is being set up, I just, again, recognize members of the town of Wilmington, officials of the town, Police Chief Begonis, Public Works Superintendent Mike Woods, Mr. Holt from our Town Engineering Department, and I think I just saw Carol Hamilton, our Planning Director. So they are with us this evening in attendance for this matter. And while the, while the presentation is being set up, I just, again, recognize members of the town of Wilmington, officials of the town, Police Chief Begonis, Public Works Superintendent Mike Woods, Mr. Holt from our Town Engineering Department, and I think I just saw Carol Hamilton, our Planning Director. So they are with us this evening in attendance for this matter. And while the, while the presentation is being set up, I just, again, recognize members of the town of Wilmington, officials of the town, Police Chief Begonis, Public Works Superintendent Mike Woods, Mr. Holt from our Town Engineering Department, and I think I just saw Carol Hamilton, our Planning Director. So they are with us this evening in attendance for this matter. And while the, while the presentation is being set up, I just, again, recognize members of the town of Wilmington, officials of the town, Police Chief Begonis, Public Works Superintendent Mike Woods, Mr. Holt from our Town Engineering Department, and I think back here, that's after construction is finished, obviously after years of restoration and growth. Here, there's a pipeline marker right here. So that farmland is on top of a pipeline right-of-way. And this is another pipeline here, heading back this way, where you've had vegetation and growth over the area. So areas can be restored in many ways to pre-existing conditions. There are some limitations on that, permanent structures or long-rooted trees on top of the right-of-way itself, but certainly cropland and bushes and growth. We need to have the ability to monitor the pipeline from the air, but there are a lot of abilities to use the land as it was before. So these are actual photos of our existing pipeline system here in Wilmington. So for pipeline projects, there are significant benefits in the short and long term. This will be job-intensive. About 3,000 union construction jobs will be part of the project. The laborers, operators, and teamsters will be a big part of that. We signed an agreement with the laborers' union to commit to utilizing union labor. There will be significant tax revenue as part of it. We estimate with the overall system expansion in Massachusetts, we'll add about $25 million per year to local taxing bodies. I don't know the number exactly that would apply here, but it would be divided up on the value of the pipe. That's what that $25 million estimate is about. And I think we have, how many miles do we have here locally, potentially? Two or three? Two or three? So it would be the portion of that $25 million would be part of the local taxing. But I know the town does not get all of that, but there will be distribution to local governments. But the real long-term value of a project like this is the availability of additional natural gas supply. Again, we don't build pipelines in hopes that they're needed. We only build pipelines when we know that there's commercial need for it, commercial meaning distribution to customers, customers ultimately meaning consumers, and that has to be firmly shown through those commercial contracts. So we believe the project is needed and will pursue the project if, in fact, that's verified by those commercial commitments. So projects like this attract a lot of attention, and that's why we've done 18 town hall meetings. We're probably doing 18 more. There'll probably be 20 open houses and public hearings about this. It's a very lengthy and extensive review process, and that's fine because it's a big project. And part of that outreach has been from Governor Patrick to boards of selectmen and state agencies and state legislators. We've had literally hundreds of meetings to talk about the project before it even becomes a real project in the sense of filing for our permits, and we'll certainly continue to do that. Mentioned the town meetings that we've had so far, number 18 this evening. We're also very active in the community as well, and where we have our new construction projects, we try to be good partners, whether it's with law enforcement or emergency responders or schools and finding ways to be, have a good reputation and ability for community investment and partnership. We certainly plan to do that with our project here. And finally, we have our Kinder Morgan Foundation, which donates to schools and arts organizations on a charitable basis in the region. So that's our project and our proposal. Again, this is an informal process leading up to a more formal process where there'll be lots of opportunity for public input. We welcome that. We've learned a lot at our town hall meetings and individual meetings that we have. Currently in process, too, locally, is a survey process that's underway. And what that means is the route that you see here on the map, the purple and blue lines, are really survey corridors, where we're trying to determine what we believe to be a constructible and a permissible route, if in fact it is. So in addition to the tabletop and information that's available publicly and driving close to the route and getting all the data that we can, we also ultimately will need to get on the land and take a closer look. So civil surveys, environmental surveys on properties to determine if, in fact, what we believe is constructible actually is. And that initial process in consultation with landowners has led to many route adjustments to compensate for landowner concerns or potential development or perhaps environmental issues that we didn't know about. But the survey process is critical to helping us refine a route. And then the route that we actually file for in our pre-filing process in September will be a proposed route. We'll also identify potential alternative routes. Some have suggested you should run the pipe down the Mass Pike, for example, or adjacent to Route 2, or lots of suggestions are out there. So we're going to need to identify potential alternatives as well because really the year, beginning of September, is an evaluative process where we can take input and make further route adjustments over that time period. But this is a critical time, too, because the route that we propose is a route that we hope we can build, and we believe we can build, or we wouldn't propose it. But at the end of the day, the regulatory agencies will decide on our route. It's not what we decide, it's what they decide. And that, we welcome public input in that regard. So we look forward to working with you. We're available certainly at any time to answer questions. We want to provide the information that you need for your constituents and be a good corporate partner through this process.
I think what we'll do is go to the board initially for any questions or comments and the town manager, then we'll go to the audience to see if there's any questions or comments we can answer there, and then we'll take it from there. Ending up here at the front, gentlemen?
Yeah, I have probably several questions. I don't want to hog the mic, so I'll ask a couple. If I may, Mr. Chairman, as other people ask questions, if I have, maybe we come back to it before we close it off. So thank you, gentlemen, for the presentation. It's a lot of information scattered about here with maps and grids and lots of stuff, and I'm looking forward to studying it more after the fact. Just out of curiosity, where your lines end, you know, I see that they sort of dead-end on the maps sometimes, do N-Star and the other, your customers' lines pick up and then deliver? I imagine they don't just end and someone comes in and fills it up?
Yeah, we're going to a particular point for additional distribution. So the lines that you see are our lines, but they'll be connecting with other lines, other distribution systems.
So they interact with other owners' lines, okay. One of the things that I note or that I consider is the vulnerability of the risk. This is explosive stuff running through a pipe right through our communities, and I wish we didn't have to think about such things, but in our times, unfortunately, we do. There is, you know, there it is. It's right there. Is there a perceived risk or have you considered the risk or vulnerability that having this level of combustible running through a community represents?
Yeah, I can talk about the safety and how we construct the pipeline to make sure that it's safe before it goes in operation and during. All of the pipe is made of steel. It's all welded together. Every weld is 100% x-rayed before it is installed in the ground, and all the welds are coated. We install the pipeline, once the pipeline is installed and before it goes into service also, it's filled with water and we hydrotest it, which we put pressure on it way above any pressure they'll ever see in service, test it for a minimum of eight hours, and then we'll de-water the pipeline and we'll place it in service. Once it is in service, we have automatic valves and valve closures along, and the pipe itself is monitored by our gas control 24 hours a day. And many valves can be closed, you know, from automatically or with a push of a button. Others monitor the pipeline and close themselves. In addition to that, what we do is periodically, and about every seven years is a good timeframe, we run what they call smart pigs. A pig is a device that'll go through the pipeline itself, but these pigs are what they call high-resolution magnetic tools. What they do is they put a magnetic charge on the pipe when it goes through, and there are sensors in there, and it basically, not with cameras, but with this magnetic field, can take a picture of the inside and the outside of the pipe. If there's any corrosion or, we can see that and address that. When the pipe is installed and as it's operating, there's a cathodic protection, in addition to just being coated, there's a cathodic protection system on it, which is, it's an induced current that will prevent corrosion also. So there's multiple layers on there to prevent the pipe from being corroded or having issues.
So any kind of damage or if someone wanted to do damage to it, it would be intercepted, upline and shut down so that...
If there were something like that to happen, yes, the valves will close. And one thing I didn't mention that I should is that we also run periodic aerial patrols. We run, it's mostly helicopters, I believe, that we run every few weeks at least, up and down all of our pipeline system. And they do fly at a pretty high level. That's going on right now with the existing pipeline that goes through town to monitor for any third-party digging in the area at all. And if you look, that is the major cause of pipeline issues is third-party damage.
Thank you. One more question, and then I'll hand the microphone over. My concern or a statement, then a question. My knee-jerk reaction to this is generally, I like the idea of American product that's coming from our soil making its way to American consumers and being done so by American workers. So I think there's a lot of good that comes of that as opposed to continuing to purchase fuel from offshore and, you know, feeding that system. So my reaction is positive in that regard. The concern I guess I have is probably what a lot of people's concerns are about citing it through potentially private property or close to private property and having an impact on people's lives in a negative way. The positives that you drew to our attention seem clear, and I have no reason to think that's not true. But the negatives around, you know, the construction that goes on before, during, and maybe even after the pipeline goes in, concerns me. And so is there an intent or a desire to, or an awareness of trying to run along old canals or maybe rail lines that are either not used anymore, or maybe even rail lines that are used but off to the left of it or to the right of it, or existing utility lines, you know, where the wire is on those large chassis, maybe underneath that, or something to that effect, so that you minimize any new impact to residents?
Yes, and that is one of the things that Alan mentioned, the FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission encourages, is for us to co-locate where possible. And I can't speak to exactly in the town, the distance, but about 40% of this existing lateral that comes off the mainline is co-located mainly with power lines. And we were looking at the routing a little more detail before we came in here. As was said, we're still very early in the process. We just have a general corridor. We're starting to get folks out, and we want to start field survey soon. But if you look, we're actually on a power line corridor for ways through here, and then we kind of jut off, actually, it's right through here, and then we get back on down here. We're going to reevaluate that and see if we can run further along that power line corridor. There is a quarry in the area, and that is why the original corridor kind of went around that, but we need to do some more due diligence to try to maximize that where we can. We can't always do that because of constructibility and safety issues like we talked about, but that would be our goal, too. If it's possible, we would much rather be co-located with other utilities or linear projects.
Thank you. I have some other questions on my mind, but I'll yield to Lou and to any others that want to ask their questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Very informative. So just basically, in your mind, this is a goal, right? This is going to happen. I know, I realize you're in the early stages, but this is going to happen.
Couple of things have to happen. One certainly is the commercial piece. We believe, we have 12 local distribution companies that have expressed commercial interest, and we've reached commercial agreement. We don't have signed contracts yet. We're very close, and we're confident we'll get those, and we expect to make an announcement on that roughly within the next 30 to 45 days by the end of July. That's the first piece we have to have. We're confident we will, but if we don't, we wouldn't pursue the project. We're pretty confident we will based upon their interest in signing those contracts. If that happens, yes. We also need to, as Scott has talked about, refine the route because we need to have a project that is permissible. In other words, that can get the approvals, the rigorous review that the best state of Massachusetts is going to put the project through, as well as the federal government. We're going to need to have the confidence level based upon routing and adjustments that we're going to make that the project will be permitted. But we're confident that we can get there as well. So I don't want to say anything is a certainty, and then we don't approve the project, we only propose it, but we're confident we're going to take the initial step for the pre-file.
Okay. I'm very interested to see what Carol Hamilton has to say tonight, but we're up here representing the town of Wilmington, and I have another thing for us. You said public safety, you work with them, a recreation area or something. Is that something that you do and work with our planning board and perhaps field space or something dangerous project? Is that, did I hear you right when you said you work with the community and those types of things?
Yes, we do. And, you know, each community is different, and we want to certainly work with the Board of Selectmen and are interested in hearing what you have to say or thoughts or ideas that you have, suggestions or recommendations. There's the formal piece of the process, which is the tax revenue that we're required to pay, but we also are a company that's interested in corporate citizenship and community partnerships, and we'd certainly be willing to talk about that with the town.
Beautiful. Thank you. I have a couple of questions. First, in terms of the public safety component of the discussion, and I understand that you go through a process of trying to figure out the best way to locate, the best places to locate this and what different safety mechanisms you have in place. But are there any that you would consider to be disqualifying, you know, features or existing conditions? And just off the top of my head, I'm saying a school, for example. I mean, notwithstanding whatever safety precautions are in place, no system is foolproof, you know, are there kind of a short list of places that, or kinds of places that you don't consider?
I can't, yeah, I mean, when we do route, we look at, one of the big pieces is constructibility. We try to stay away from homes where we can, and that is not totally from a safety standpoint, but from a disruption standpoint and a landowner standpoint. We do look at items like you mentioned, at schools and other areas that we know are sensitive and large gathering areas. In fact, we are regulated, and we mentioned, and Alan mentioned earlier, by the DOT, which the specific group is PHMSA, the Pipeline and Hazardous Materials Safety Administration. They have requirements for design for us, valve spacing, how thick the pipe has to be, how deep it has to be, based on population density, based on if we are near a place where the public would gather or anything like that. So those requirements are embedded in the regulations that we have to follow. Like we mentioned, a quarry is one thing that isn't real compatible with a pipeline if they're digging near it or blasting near it. And like we said, that's why they route it around. We need to do a little more due diligence there. There are some topography instances where we have difficulty, but for the most part, we can design to manage those, although sometimes our footprint has to get a little bit bigger.
Okay, so in boiling down those responses, I'm coming to the conclusion that places where people congregate are not, you know, on the top of the list, and certainly places where activity could be a disruption to the pipeline. I think that makes sense to all of us. How does traffic fit into that? How does interstate, you know, and just state route motor vehicle traffic, how does that fit into this concept of potential disruption? And I just think of, you know, let alone the activities at a quarry, but, you know, 1,000 truck trips a day from, you know, big trucks and the manner in which they vibrate the street. Is that, is that part of the consideration, or is your infrastructure considered to be, you know, beyond the disruption of things like that?
At roads, road crossings is specific, something you mentioned. You know, we're always, well, we'll be at least five foot deep at any road crossing. Usually, we're a little deeper than that because there's usually existing utilities and things that run along the road, and we want to keep some separation between our facilities and those in case either one of us has to do any maintenance in the future. But that is not a concern as far as the vibration of the trucks, if it is a well-established road. If it's a dirt road or something, we do look at that, and sometimes we'll put a concrete slab on top or something like that to prevent loading. But on a blacktop road with a good base, which, you know, we'll do engineering, specific engineering design on each road crossing and check things like you're talking about, but typically, no, that is not a concern.
Okay.
Yeah, and I guess I would say as far as construction and traffic and disruption, I mean, in some places, we do open cut roads and we have to maintain and have a traffic plan maybe with one lane closed. In larger roads, like an interstate or other roads, like we said, everything's got to be permissible, so we'll go in and have to talk to whoever is in control of those roads and whoseever responsibility that is on how we'll cross them. That'll be in our specific permit. But many roads, we do bore under. We'll dig a pit on either side and bore under the pipe with an auger essentially, and then pull the new pipe in. It won't be used to bore, and then, like we said, pressure test that and everything. It won't be used to bore and then, like we said, pressure test that and everything else too. And typically, we do put a little heavier wall pipe, a little thicker at road crossings just because that's good practice, good engineering practice.
And then just to go back to some of Mr. Flor's comments from earlier, in terms of the economy of all of this, you had mentioned the increased reliance of the Northeast region and I took it even the entire Eastern region of the United States on that particular source in the Utica area. What's the dynamics at play there? Does it have to do with the availability of the supply? Does it have to do with the increased demand in the East? Help me, help me get my head around the macro of this in terms of what it does for people.
Good question, and it really deals with both. And going back to the supply basin for the region, and this really has been a game changer, if you will, in the natural gas distribution and has made natural gas a fuel, really, I mean, our company, as a natural gas distribution company, calls natural gas a bridge energy, a bridge fuel, a bridge to renewables. As from regulatory practices, from simple good economics, some of the other fuel sources, domestic or otherwise, are going down. Nuclear, coal, fuel oil, and natural gas is an alternative more than ever from the shale plays that currently exist and all of these shales are becoming more prolific in ability to produce more natural gas. But if you just look at the size of this, I mean, 25 years ago, no one was talking about the Marcellus shale. They just weren't, including us. Today, everyone is talking about the Marcellus shale. For the first time, it's not New England is at the end of the line. You're right at the front of the line. In fact, there's so much supply in this region that supply is going back south. So, you know, and the Energy Information Administration of the federal government does analyses of supply and how much gas is in the Marcellus region. They're talking about 100-year supply of natural gas. I don't think anyone really believes that natural gas will be the predominant fuel in 100 years with renewables and certainly coming online more, but it really is about this shale. So the prices of gas in other regions can be, or have been, a fraction of what they are here because of the restraints and constraints on getting it here. So it's right there, but the infrastructure doesn't exist to get it here. So the pipe that we have, our pipe, Algonquin system, the two major pipelines coming in from the west and south, the maritime pipeline coming in from Canada, and there have been some offshore natural gas coming in. Well, that's all drying up, if you will, and this is the supply that's going to be here for the future, but we've got to get it to the consumers here. And that's what really what this is all about. The supply is there, the long-term supply from the shale, there needs to be additional infrastructure to get it here.
Is it, and I'm sure it's a common, I know I'm asking a question that must have a very complex answer, but is it the cost and the relative ease of getting the supply from that particular source, has that changed for the better? Is it just an increased demand based on concerns about other energy sources and oil primarily and the cost of it? Is it, is it just growth in number of homes and consumers and businesses in this area of the country? I just, I'm having a hard time understanding how that supply was always there, but for whatever reason, it wasn't economically viable to use it?
Or technologically viable to access it. That's really what it is. It's always, it's been there thousands of years, but the technology to economically extract it is relatively recent. So the technology specific to that, now, the hydraulic fracture process has been around for 60 years, more than that. But this process, particularly for this region, the ability to go deeper and access it is relatively recent. So that's why this shale play in the last 20 years has changed the entire dynamic of natural gas distribution. And now, the supply continues to grow up, maybe, I'm estimating now, but maybe 10 years ago, it was, the supply was 30%. Now it's 60%. In 10 years, it will be 90%, just because it's right there. And all of the companies, all the local distribution companies now are accessing that through our pipe. I mean, our pipe now is mostly shale gas from there. Another pipe is going to be the same type of gas. It just makes sense because it's right there and available and cheaper than any other gas supply that you could possibly get.
Okay. What I'd like, okay, what I'd like to do is go to the town manager, open it up for any questions from the audience, and then go back up front to see if there are any lingering questions or thoughts. Do you have anything, Mr. Hall?
Just a couple of initial questions. I can see from the map where it suggests the planned pipeline is running, which is North Wilmington through the Ballard Vale area. Do you have any more precise indication as to the areas that would be impacted? I know we, the town, received a request to do some preliminary survey work. I believe it was in an area near the Browns Crossing well field, water supply field, but do you have any more precise location as to where you are going in Wilmington?
Yeah, we do. I know that's kind of a high-level map. We have been utilizing the town tax maps to identify parcels specifically that we're going through. And I know there are actually two town parcels, John, that we requested permission on. Oh, okay, about four town parcels throughout there. And I can't speak intelligently enough about it right now as far as specific road crossings that we're going through, but we do have some more detailed mapping based on the town tax maps that John Gavin, the local agent, may be able to share with you folks or with you, the town manager, to help get you and your department a better idea of where we're going or where we're proposing to survey.
And just as a follow-up on that, if in fact, and I believe one of the parcels or one of the areas that was requested for preliminary survey work did essentially runs along a stretch behind what is the Winchester Family Medical Center, so it's near one of our water supply wells. Is that an area, is that an issue in terms of a criteria that you try to stay away from?
It's definitely something that we would want to identify and as Scott said, part of the survey process in working with landowners and towns is to identify those type things. It may lead to a route adjustment, it may lead to an alternate construction technique. It's not necessarily something that we would have to avoid or need to, but it would something we'd want to be aware of to evaluate, you know, how deep the wells are, what type of construction activity, how close the proposed line would be to that. So all part of the process now of gathering information and certainly the on-the-ground surveys will give us the definitive information and that's why we requested permission from the town to access those sites.
I did see Ms. Hamilton.
Obviously residents have been notified and have been asked for permission to survey their property. So you have a pretty good idea of what parcels of land you're talking about in Wilmington already. When and how soon are we going to be allowed to see which parcels you're looking at? You talk about current conditions, but you have no idea what the town development plans are at this point. At least you've not talked with anyone in my department. So it would be helpful for us to know where you think you want to go so we can determine whether this interferes with plans we already have and certainly to look at the adjacencies. And the sooner we can have that information, the better.
Yeah, absolutely. Let's, right after this meeting, exchange information and that's part of the feedback we try to gather from these town hall sessions, is to find out who the players in a given community are, to ask permission for survey, meet with the folks that have the existing knowledge in town to start marrying our proposals to the future development plans, absolutely. So I look forward to that conversation. Thank you.
Mr. Hall?
Just one other question in terms of, if this pipeline is ultimately completed, what percentage do you estimate of the gas that will run through this line will be for domestic use versus perhaps going to Canada or, I don't know, is there a mechanism where it can be transported via ship to other parts of the world?
So, it's a good question and let me go back to our system map here. Part of the securing of the commitments that we need to move forward on a project like this is firm commercial commitments from credit-worthy shippers. And that's why our anchor shippers on this project and the 12 local distribution companies we're talking about are local and are distributors of gas utilities. So that's our anchor basis of the project. As an interstate natural gas system, however, we are a common carrier, open access line. So if in the future, other credit-worthy customers come along and have an interest in our pipeline and a legitimate interest, that's something we need to look at. So while the focus and the, really, the impetus for this project moving forward is the local distribution piece and we'll announce those customers, it's possible that some gas in the line will end up in systems that would go to Canada, for example. That is possible. But for projects to be financed privately like this is, and to really be approved by the regulators, we're going to have to have a very significant portion percentage-wise that's to be determined. What I can say is that we need to have, we think, about 600 to 700 million cubic feet per day of firm capacity commitments to move forward with the project from a commercial level. So if we have, and depending on the size of pipe that we build, whether it has a capacity of a billion cubic feet or so, there will be additional capacity on that line. We expect some of that to be part of power generation. Power generators are generally not those who sign long-term agreements with pipeline companies. That's changing a little bit with what the governors have been talking about collectively is trying to get power generators together to be able to commit to pipeline capacity. The state of Maine, for example, the state itself, and really in an unprecedented way, has, the state itself may commit to capacity on a line to try to get gas up to Maine. So it is, a big part of this project is Massachusetts, but we're also providing gas to Connecticut, potentially Maine, New Hampshire, and other surrounding states and potentially some could go to Canada as well.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from town officials or anybody else in the audience? All right, maybe you can back up here and button up any lingering questions or comments?
Yeah, I got just a couple of follow-ups that popped in. The means of transportation is pipelines. That's what we've been talking about. Is there, do you currently use or is there ever a consideration of using rail tankers or truck tanks or, I think you talked about shipping? Are there other modes of transportation? You're in the business of transporting this gas, not in selling it necessarily. So what other means of transportation do you apply or are you exclusively a pipeline company?
No, we're not exclusively a pipeline company. We also are the leading independent storage company of energy and other products in the country, about 180 storage terminals. So we have all types, we handle all types of energy. Natural gas is our core business and there's no question that the safest way to transport natural gas is through underground pipelines. No question about that. There really is no other alternative. Now, if you're talking about other types of lines, products lines, for example, oil, other types, rail is an alternative to that and we're part of some different operations in different parts of the country that transports through our systems by rail. But here, we're talking about natural gas and only natural gas and pipelines are the most cost-effective, the safest, the best way to transport.
And the reason I ask was if there are sensitivities by folks here in Wilmington or any of the other towns where you're sending your pipe through, I was curious as to whether or not a rail use, a use of rail could be used instead of a pipeline where there's, the rail's already in place. But it sounds like you've answered that question with regards to natural gas, not an option.
Right.
Okay, fair. Also, and I don't want to pretend to be an expert, but I'm aware that, and you kind of alluded to it, you're not the only guys that do this kind of work. So there was some documentation that I came across that indicated that while you did bring to our attention that the demand was higher than your ability to deliver last year, that there's another player in the industry that's going to have an increase in supply as soon as next year. So how does that impact the plans and the supply, I guess, deficiency that you talk about?
And the other major provider, it's, if you see this light blue system here?
Okay.
That's the Algonquin system. And Spectra Energy is the parent company, as Kingdom Morgan is the parent of Tennessee. They have an extensive system here and they provide roughly half of the gas through pipelines to the region from the south and west. And they are looking at expansion in their system. So they're going through the similar regulatory approvals that we will need to go through. They're serving some of the same customers, some different customers. Again, they have to receive, get their approvals, they have to get their customer commitments just like we do. What will both projects go through as they are seen now and as they will be introduced to the FERC? We can't say that. What we can say is that our project will proceed upon the basis of our commercial commitments. So regardless of what Spectra does or doesn't do, if we have our commercial commitments that are locked up, that's what we're going to proceed with through the permitting process.
Okay. I don't know exactly how to materialize that information, but I guess I'm a little concerned about the notion of sitting in this room next year with gentlemen just like yourself from Spectra Energy saying they're going to be putting another set of lines through our town. So inasmuch as I understand the need for an increase in supply and the potential benefit that that represents, I'm also, you know, conscious of some of these other impacts.
It's like, I appreciate your question and to try to expand upon that a bit more. There are different ways to supply the region. There is incremental increase, which is a smaller increase in supply, or there really is a project like we're proposing, how we view our project, is to generate the long-term needs of the region and have the ability to address now and have the infrastructure built that will serve, that will serve the area for 25-plus years, perhaps the entire time the natural gas serves as the bridge energy. So our project is much bigger in scope than Spectra's. Theirs is more of an incremental project. Not that there's anything wrong with what they're proposing, they're servicing what they believe to be the needs of their customers. We're seeing a much bigger need and a longer term need in reaction to what the governors have been saying, in reaction to what our customers have been saying. At the end of the day, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission regulates the gas supply and distribution system for North America and they're, excuse me, for the United States. And they're going to make the determination, not just about safety issues and construction issues, environmental issues, but also supply issues. The authorization for a pipeline project like this is what's called a certificate of public convenience and necessity. That's what the FERC will eventually vote on, the five commissioners appointed by the president. They'll take a public vote on this project in what we, probably two-plus years, if the permitting goes forward as we anticipate that it will. And they'll make a determination based upon all of the factors, but key amongst those, is this in the public interest? I'm paraphrasing a bit, but public convenience and necessity. They'll need to make that determination and part of that is what you're talking about. Is this what's going to service this region? Is this the best project in size and scope? And that's going to be part of the public review process and eventually their vote.
Thank you. I will say that, as I said, it's a lot of information and I'm looking forward to digging in and becoming more knowledgeable, for lack of a better word, about what this project represents. I don't think I have to ask, but I, work closely, as I know you will, with Carol and Jeff and we're anxious to continue to get reports from you and hear about what's going on with this project, you know, every day from now on, you know? We want to make sure that we can keep our constituents informed and advised and up to date on this whole thing. So thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just very briefly, I would just reiterate what Mr. Shampoo has said. If there's any takeaway for your company and your group this evening, I would hope that it's, that, you know, we certainly won't be shy about enlisting the help of our congressional delegation, our legislative delegation on the state level, but, and we want to continue to use, you know, a forum such as this to keep the public informed and to give the public... an opportunity to weigh in. But just as importantly, in terms of communication, we rely very heavily on our administrative folks, from town manager to planning director to director of public works and his engineering staff. So if there's a takeaway for your team, I'd ask that it be to maximize the level of communication with our administrative folks, and if you do that, I think you'll always have, you know, an honest opportunity to address the town.
We appreciate that, Mr. Chairman, and we are committed to that and communication and transparency in this process. And I encourage, in addition to what we will do proactively, such as notify the town officials when we actually file for our project and significant developments like the kickoff of survey, which you should be getting a notification of very soon via email. We'll certainly have our website with all the materials that have been available today. I encourage you to visit that to get, download copies so you can look at them at their leisure. And once the process starts too, and this is very important, ferc.gov, FERC.gov, is the main regulatory agency over, with oversight on the project, and they will establish a docket number, and we'll provide that to the town. Any individual can go to that website, sign up for the docket number, and you will receive in your inbox, in your email inbox, whenever anything is filed in the project, it will come to your inbox. So whether it's us making the filing or someone who has a comment, a question, or an opponent, or whatever it might be, all that information will come to your inbox. It's a very informative process, free to sign up for at FERC, and that really is a good way for everyone to keep informed. But we'll also commit to proactively providing new information as well as coming back as needed to meet with the council in a public or private setting.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time and for the information.
Thank you.
Sure. Do you have anything?
Yeah, I'd like to, actually, two more questions if you would. One, with respect to the maintenance of these pipelines, can you talk a little bit about how that works? I mean, I presume there's some kind of a regular process of ensuring that the pipelines don't have breaches and there aren't problems?
Yeah, I mean, the main maintenance, we, sometimes we run what they call cleaning pigs through the pipeline, and that doesn't happen very often, in many cases, not at all, because all the gas that comes into our pipeline, it doesn't come straight out of the wellhead, it's processed before it comes in. We have quality standards of what type of gas we let into our pipeline, because ultimately it goes to a consumer, someone's burning it in their home, it's got to be high-quality gas. The main maintenance is that we'll walk the pipeline, I think it's about once a year, and they do what they call a flame eye check. Sometimes they can do that by air too. They'll look for any leak at all with an instrument. It's very, very sensitive. So that happens annually at least. The other thing that happens, like we mentioned, is we run these tools through the pipeline, and in high consequence, what the PHMSA calls high consequence areas, that's just a definition that says there's, you're in a fairly populated area. And with that comes another step in the maintenance and keeping up with the pipeline, which there's more than one way you can keep up with that. One way is to rehydrate test pipelines and do things like that, but what we as a company do and what most pipeline companies do is run smart pigs periodically, and that, that timing is about every seven years. So about every seven years, we'll run that specialized tool through that pipe to re-verify and make sure there are no issues with the pipe at all. And if we do identify a place where we think there is corrosion, or if there's a place that looks odd, what's called an anomaly in it, we'll go out and investigate that, dig it up and check it, and if it requires any kind of maintenance or fixing it, we fix it immediately.
Thank you. And the other, I guess, question I'll just ask you to comment on if you choose, there's certainly been a lot of press coverage in the local newspapers about the meetings you've had, and it seems to me, from what I've been reading, that many of these communities are opposed to this project and are in various stages of mobilizing, so to speak. I'd be curious as to your reaction to that, or what, if there are common themes that you're seeing here as to why there seems to be so much concern?
Well, I don't want to speak for those who may not be supportive of the project, but I think some of the common themes that we're hearing, and I think responding to, are routing issues. How have you, how did you decide upon the route that you're proposing? What are you doing to try to respond to issues related to that route? For example, it might be conservation lands, or it might be proximity to a particularly sensitive area, or as today, when we talk to the state of Massachusetts, about state-controlled lands, and particularly environmentally sensitive or culturally sensitive areas in the state. So how are we responding to, and how can we adjust our route to address those concerns? There are issues related to the gas supply itself and where it's coming from, and the fracked gas debate. And so what we're trying to do is educate folks about that and where gas is currently coming from, and we've talked about the natural gas supply, and that we're responding to what we believe to be a need for the region. I guess that's the third piece. Is there a need? Is this need real, and is this type of infrastructure necessary for the energy security of the region? So you're right, we've had a lot of interest, we've had 18 town halls, and we've had a lot of folks come out and talk to us at those meetings and express their concerns, but we understand that in the, in the infrastructure development business and operation business, and that's the business that we're in. We just completed the application process, approval process for a project in Arizona, another major expansion process of ours, and that's in the middle of the desert, literally. I will tell you, the folks there are as passionate about the desert as the folks here are passionate about the Berkshires or anywhere else in Massachusetts, the conservation lands. So it's happening all across the country, so what the obligation is, is upon the applicant. And we had that project permitted and approved by the state of Arizona and the FERC. What companies like Kinder Morgan and others need to do is spend the time necessary talking to people and educating people, particularly those directly impacted, but really all stakeholders about what our process is. We're never going to convince everyone about what we're doing is needed, but we're going to do our best to do that and to be part of this discussion process. And what, you know, what we tell folks at these meetings is, and as we said tonight, this is a process that is multi-years in duration. In fact, if you notice by our schedule, the earliest we could have a project like this in service is the winter heating season of 2018. And that's with a schedule that really is moving along with what we hope is a successful permitting process. So there is ample opportunity for public discourse on this project, and that, I think, at the end of the day is what is key, is that people feel, whether they're strongly opposed or supportive, or some more just wanting more information, is that they have a role in this process, and they have a chance to contribute, and we're responsible, that from our local land agent like John, and Mike and his land team, to our construction folks who are managing how we construct this project, to our permitting folks, to me who does this kind of thing in outreach and communication. It's a process, and we're committed to doing whatever is needed from a transparency and outreach standpoint to provide the information, to educate folks, and hopefully at the end of the day, the regulators will agree with what we believe to be a very, very serious need of additional natural gas supply to the region. But it's really a policy debate. You know, we're one pipeline company, a major pipeline company, and a major supplier of natural gas, but the larger policy issues will be part of this too. And that's what you're seeing, and I know it's a long answer to your question, but you're also seeing these policy issues debated at the town halls, is, is natural gas needed? Is where it's coming from needed? Renewables, can we get to renewables sooner, and lots of those other issues, which will be part of the discussion the FERC will have when they talk about the public need.
Anything else? Sorry, I jumped. Okay, I think that's it.
Thank you.
Again, thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Indeed, thank you. Thank you. All right, I know that in the interest of time, we had moved through the agenda and taken a couple of things out of order. I know that we had moved some things around on the agenda for the sake of efficiency. Like to return to the agenda with agenda item number eight. We have two more board to consider items. Mr. Hall?
Yes, the next on the agenda is a board to consider the issuance of an entertainment license to the 99s here in Wilmington. We received correspondence back on June 18th from Tiffany Brinkley from the licensing division at the 99, indicating on behalf of the above referenced restaurant under licensee 99 West LLC, please accept this as a notification that the restaurant is planning to shut down for five days beginning on August 3rd, 2014, to complete a routine refresh of the restaurant. Upon reopening the restaurant, we would also request the approval to conduct live entertainment, specifically a singer/dj from approximately 4:45 PM to 7:30 PM on August 7th, 2014. The following is a description of the maintenance that is scheduled during the five-day shutdown. Exterior work including painting exterior, painting the exterior of the building and installation of new awnings with wall lights. Interior work including painting interior walls, replacement of carpeting in the dining room, refurbishment of existing booths, removal of some booths in the center portion of the dining room and replacing them with freestanding tables and chairs. Raise existing drop ceilings directly above the bar approximately 18 inches to accommodate four new 50-inch flat-screen TVs, miscellaneous minor carpentry improvements, and replacement of the existing synthetic bar top with mahogany and wood top of the same size. None of the work changes the structure, alcohol service, nor the bar area. The restaurant, the work is in the nature of routine aesthetic maintenance and not structural in nature beyond the scope of replacement and refurbishing. Restaurant is not undergoing remodeling. I have also included a copy of the before and after floor plans. So the request before the board is to grant an entertainment license, essentially it's for a period of 2 hours and 45 minutes. Typically, we don't receive entertainment license requests for this duration. There is no specific policy within the town's bylaws or board of selectmen's policies with respect to how this is handled. I would suggest that the board grant the request at no charge, given the limited duration of this request.
Do you have a motion to that effect?
So move.
Yes, I'll second it.
May they second it or hold it? Unanimous?
I would just note, for the record, that the, this request was reviewed by the police chief, and he recommended approval. Next under board to consider is the issue of whether or not to participate or join the Middlesex Coalition of Municipalities. This is with respect to the Tennessee Gas Pipeline. As you know, after the last meeting, it was the board's directive that I designate a representative to the July 1st meeting, which was in Groton. Bill Holt, who is one of the assistant engineers in town, has served in that role and attended the meeting in Groton. So at this point, my suggestion would be that based upon the presentation, the board consider whether it wishes to formally join this coalition, and whether you have any questions about the coalition to this point. I did include in the packet information from Bill that talked about the first meeting was very preliminary, but there may be questions about that.
Any comments?
Well, yeah, I, thank you, Mr. Hall. I received the memo from Mr. Holt, is Mr. Holt here? Yeah, thank you, Mr. Holt. You made comment in your memo to us that, I'm looking for the phrase, but it seemed like the general tenor and the feel of the participants was an opposition group to the project. And that's definitely the sense that I got from early communications that we got from them, that this was a group being put together not to become informed or knowledgeable about what the plans were, but rather to thwart the project and make it not happen. Would you, is that a reasonable?
Yeah, initially it did start off as pretty much opposition, but it sort of got, it got rethought and they adjusted their thinking to be more of gathering information and trying to analyze the impact of the pipeline on the various communities that are involved. Some of them were impacted by the pipeline in Wilmington, really. And they wanted to basically gather that information and be able to decide a couple of different approaches to, its majority of it was opposition, but they kind of want to get more information and be able to provide that to the different towns and to the different government organizations to.
To me, that kind of represents a bit of a, I don't know if a catch-22, but a bit of a conflict, because I want the information. In other words, the good work that they, that this group does in terms of gathering information and maybe working with consultants and doing some of the stuff that I think I, that I saw was part of their mission statement, seems positive. On the other hand, I don't feel particularly inclined to join a group that's in opposition to the, to the project, because I don't particularly feel like I'm in opposition to the project. Again, I don't yet feel like I'm pro-gas pipeline extension, but I certainly don't feel like we have enough information at this stage of the game to step up and say, no, this shouldn't happen. So I don't, I'm a little weary about signing on as a, as a member of this group where it seems pretty clear that this group is making it their, their mission to thwart the project. See, that's my, I'm not making a motion yet, I just wanted to have a dialogue with my colleagues here. I don't know how you guys feel about it.
Yeah, you know, I honed in on the same, same information that you did from Bill's memorandum. I guess I would just, I'd say, I guess at this point, I think we have to take it at face value. If the coalition is intended to gather information, investigate alternatives, et cetera, if Bill thinks it's going to continue to be a productive use of time, then we'll ask him to continue doing that, and we'll join. Doesn't cost us anything, we get the information, and certainly we'll rely heavily on Mr. Holt and Mr. Woods and the entire administrative team. If at some point the tenor of that group really takes a turn, and we feel like it's not really productive, then certainly let us know, and we don't want to put you through an exercise. But if it's useful, let's continue to send you.
Actually, on the 14th is actually when they're going to organize the coalition. It's actually, it's really in 22 stages right now.
Yep.
They haven't even finalized the organization of how it's going to operate. I think on the 14th we'll get more information, and at that point, we can provide another report and let you know what's happening with the coalition, and then you can have more information to just make the decision on whether to join or not. So I would think that it would be worthwhile to attend the 14th meeting, at least to gather more information on the coalition and how it's going to operate, and at that point, the board can make a decision beyond that, once we get that information.
Okay. Does anybody then?
Does anybody then have, based on those comments, anybody have an objection to simply tabling it? And we'll hear back from these guys at our next meeting. Is that okay?
I agree.
Yeah, take it up again? Yes, agreed.
Okay. Thank you again, Mr. Holt. Appreciate your time. Mr. Woods, thank you. Public comments? Any questions or comments from the audience? New business. Mr. Shimpou?
No new business. I just want to make you aware that because of our scheduled appointment tonight, it frees me up from, I guess what was going to be, when was this meeting supposed to happen? Next Monday, right? So the Historical Commission is meeting on Monday. I wouldn't have been able to attend that meeting. I am now, so I'll be attending that, and we'll have some type of report at our next selectmen meeting.
Thank you.
I'd just like to wish Chairman O'Connell the best and hope she's feeling better.
Thank you. I do have a new-business item as well. Would you like to go first about the Shriners?
Yes, I'd just like to extend a real, true thanks to the Shriners, specifically the representative that I had some level of dealings with, Sheila Boret, I believe it is? Basset, I'm sorry, Basset. In terms of the tremendous accommodations that they made during the July 4th. And actually, to even step back from that, after it appeared that we may not have an opportunity to celebrate in the manner that we're accustomed to, in talking to Chief Begonis, he had suggested, gee, you know, the Shriners have been incredibly accommodating to his group and the Nemlet group that have done a number of different programs located at the Shriners. So I reached out and spoke with Sheila, and she said, "Whatever you need, you know, just give us a call." So, and certainly, I'm glad that in the end of July 4th, committee was able to step in and do what they do best, which is organizing this. But I think a lot of credit goes to the chief for the idea in terms of having a conversation with her, but also, you know, just the tremendous effort that they put out in terms of making the whole facility available to us at no charge whatsoever. Just a great situation, and I can't say enough about the Shriners.
I like that, I thought of what the town manager just said. We adapted, we overcome, thanks to the chief and his men. And minus one day of rain, it was a pretty good celebration the whole weekend, especially with pedestrian traffic exiting, they were under control. We did a nice job with that. But seriously, thank you, chief, and all your manning there. It was a good time. It was fun on the 4th.
I would just add to that, I just want to recognize the town manager in that regard. I think it was in February when we had a meeting in this auditorium where, you know, the news had already basically broken that, you know, there wasn't going to be a fun on the 4th celebration. And I think that quite literally, that meeting was probably Mr. Hall's finest hour as a manager in terms of the public eye. And, you know, in hindsight, I wish that that meeting had been televised, because I think it would have been a very clear demonstration to folks about the commitment that the town administration has, starting with the manager and all the great things he said about his folks just a few minutes ago. But really, I think it was a great job that you had done on that, Mr. Hall. So I just wanted to echo the sentiments that have been expressed.
Thank you.
I have a new-business item that I'd like to put on the board's radar, and I certainly will have a conversation with Chairman O'Connell when she's bouncing back at our next meeting. But I received a call this week from the press asking my thoughts on the apparent departure of the Bruins from Wilmington in terms of its practice facility. And, you know, from my standpoint, I happen to be a hockey fan, I happen to be a Bruins fan, you know, I enjoy the game, I enjoy rooting for the Bruins. And I'm sure that they have done some things in town that I'm not even aware of that are very productive. But, you know, my response to the member of the press who called me was, I really don't, you know, I don't think it's really going to have an impact. I think the, you know, in terms of economic development, in terms of what it brings to the economy, again, there may be some things that I simply don't see, but I think it's, you know, it's not a huge impact. I think it's on the, you know, more on the margins. With that said, though, it brings into focus for me an issue that I know many, many residents have expressed frustration over. I've been particularly aware of it in the course of the last year, and I've been very frustrated with it. And that is the use of that skating rink as it, you know, was intended to be a resource for Wilmington residents and for Wilmington kids. And I've, you know, I've begun to pull some paperwork together, and I'll continue to do that. But just in terms of, you know, getting it on the board's radar, many folks will remember that the town voted to re-own that property in 1984 for the purposes of constructing a skating rink. And at the time, the deal was that a nonprofit organization known as the Wilmington Arena Authority, Inc., which was a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, was going to operate that rink. And, you know, as it existed at its inception, the board of directors of that consisted of a representative from Wilmington Youth Hockey, a representative from Wilmington Skating Club, a representative from the Wilmington Recreation Department, a representative from Wilmington Law Enforcement, a representative from Wilmington High School Athletic Department, and a representative from the community at large. And when that organization applied for nonprofit status, the purpose of the corporation, and I'll quote it, "The Wilmington Arena Authority is a nonprofit organization established to construct and manage a skating and recreation facility for the citizens of Wilmington. This facility will provide the Wilmington High School Hockey Team, the Wilmington Figure Skating Club, the Wilmington Youth Hockey Association, and the Wilmington Recreation Department an opportunity to participate and compete." I understand that things change, you know, there's a process by which things can change. That organization, as it currently exists, I don't know, some 25 or so years later, is now the Investment in Youth Foundation, Inc. It appears that none of the qualifications to serve on the board of directors comports with what the requirements were at its inception. And there's an established track record here of, you know, donations and contributions to three different private high schools and a youth hockey organization in Plymouth. So I'm, you know, I'm sure that there's an explanation as to how things changed. I think that it's incumbent on the board to perhaps invite folks from that nonprofit to join us, and maybe explain how that metamorphosis has occurred over the course of time. And, you know, I just wanted to get it on your radar, and I'd ask the chairman upon her return to include it in an agenda item. Thank you. Thank you. Another item, just again, mostly as a matter of public information, I'd had a conversation recently with the manager about the prospect of perhaps doing some kayaking or paddleboarding lessons at Silver Lake starting next year. So I know that we're experiencing some changes at Silver Lake, and I've been struck recently at the popularity of paddleboarding and kayaking. It's not my cup of tea, but it seems wildly popular, especially amongst young people. So I look forward to hearing some more about those opportunities from the manager, and the purpose for bringing it up is, if anybody in the general public has thoughts on that and thinks it's a good idea, certainly contact the Recreation Department over here at Town Hall, and we'd love to hear from you. Anything else?
Would it be improved to ask the chief now for any kind of preliminary update or, I guess, observations of how the beach situation is going so far? Or do you want to maybe put that on a radar screen for, a bullet item for the next meeting?
What do you think, Mr. Hall? You think that it warrants an agenda item to review how things have gone maybe in the next month, or what are your thoughts?
I think the plan all along has been that we would, at the close of the beach season, August 17th is when the beach formally closes with lifeguards, that we would assess how the program went this year with respect to the various changes that have been made, and then perhaps, if necessary, make some adjustments. So it may be, let's see, the board meets, I believe, on August 11th. I would suggest perhaps either an agenda item at that meeting, or perhaps the September meeting.
Very well. Trust you'll have that conversation with the chairman.
Yes.
Anything else? All right. Important dates, Mr. Hall?
Important dates, we have the market continuing their events through October 12th, but most currently, they're going to be held at the Town Common on the parking lot of the Town Common, 10:30 to 1:30 PM. Concerts on the Common, the next one is the 16th of July. Radio Waves is the group, 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM. Again, on the 23rd of July, The Reminiscence, 6:30 to 8:00 PM. Then again, on July 30th, Mark Shelton, 6:30 to 8:00 PM. August 3rd is the Healden Tavern Open House. The hours are 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM. August 5th is the Wilmington Police Department National Night Out at Rotary Park. Then August 6th, the next brush drop-off date at Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. August 7th is the Police Association Beach Day. This is over at the Town Beach, 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. This has become quite a tradition for many, many years now, done by the Police Association. August 9th, brush drop-off Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And August 11th is the next Board of Selectments meeting in Room 9, 7:00 PM.
Do you have a motion adjourned? So move.
Second?
All favor?
Yes.